Greetings. It is six o'clock on Monday, April tenth, and I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order, unless there's an objection. I see no objections, so this meeting is called to order. Councilmember Lambert, can you lead us in the invocation of the pledge, please?
Yes. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold up to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Having some difficulty, we need to talk about the setup up here soon, but now it's time for public comment. And we'll have, each speaker will have three minutes. If you still want to put in a card, they're on the back on the music stand, for lack of a better word, and you can turn it into Eric if you'll raise your hand right here if you haven't turned in a card. Gina Parity, and we'll have thirty minutes of public comment, and then we'll have thirty minutes at the end of the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. Just come on up, make sure the green light is on the microphone, please. And speak into the microphone, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I hope you all had a nice holiday weekend. I am not going to rehash everything I've already said about the eighteen twenty-two SLOP, but everything I said before does still stand. I feel that you have heard our overwhelming concerns, and I hope you will remember them when you vote. I have briefly reviewed the applicant's latest submittal, and a few things stick out to me. Number one, in the latest drawing submitted, it is not clear if the impervious surfaces such as the deck, the parking lot, and the shed in the back are included in their calculations. I hope more detail is provided and the plans are vetted prior to approving anything. Number two, thirty-eight percent is still greater than thirty-five percent. And since this is a residence and not an institution, it should fall under the same standards that we as residents all have to abide by. Please do not lean into their distasteful and unreasonable scare tactics by the applicant in effort to get this approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy Landers, please.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Judy Landers. I live at fifteen sixty-four Vernon Way Court. I too spoke in opposition to eighteen twenty-two SLOP, March thirteenth and February fourteenth. I won't repeat what is public record. I have read the owner's most recent changes in her SLOP application. One, from the start, architectural drawings have been difficult to read and interpret. Numbers either not accurate or not inclusive of the areas described. City employees have stated that several items on the drawings were not calculated correctly or described correctly. An example, stormwater runoff. The latest changes for impervious surfaces. Have these areas been reduced or eliminated? I cannot tell from the drawings, and I couldn't locate dimensions. Who calculated thirty-eight percent? I hope it was the city of Dunwoody. Number two, at no time during this process have the owners reached out to neighbors other than their letter announcing their plans in their scheduled October twenty-two community meeting. They could have reached out a second time or third to discuss our concerns. They have the mailing addresses for residents within the thousand-foot radius of eighteen twenty-two. Number three, I will not change my opposition to the eighteen twenty-two SLOP application. Thirty-five percent does not equal thirty-eight percent. If this is a residence, then it must adhere to the same standards required by all Dunwoody residents. Number four, in simplest terms, the owners are desperately trying to push a square peg, a very large square peg, into a round hole. My neighbors and I have been described unfavorably, including derogatory remarks by some members of the group representing the owners. In my opinion, a reflection of who they are and what they want. A home that includes a commercial business in Dunwoody. They have threatened a lawsuit if not approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie Downing. No? Okay. Tom Simon?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tom Simon Stevens Walk. I noticed that five of you were at the last fish fry at All Saints. Two of them, Mr. Henning and Mr. Secunder, actually volunteered like I do. I hope you had a good meal at a fair price. Our number one concern is customer service. Okay, I'm here. I noticed that the city adopted ethics commitment. We are asking these four ethics commitments concerning them. Number one, serve others, not ourselves. Basically, do no harm. Seek out neighbors and neighborhoods and get their input. Govern by listening to your constituents, especially those who would be adversely affected by any decisions that may be made. Two, use resources with efficiency and economy. Govern within the Dunwoody budget. Three, treat all people fairly. Don't favor one group or entity over another. Four, use the power of your position for the well-being of the constituents. Create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. All four of these are wonderful and achievable ethics principles. Please govern by them and work together and also with your constituents to achieve good, but please never at the expense and detriment of neighbors and neighborhoods where your constituents live and have lived for many years. The following are coming up in the near future. The SLUP requested by the MJCCA, there's an April eleventh hearing. Brings with it some noise, lights, lots of construction at the MJCC and on Tilly Mill. And of course, you also have looked at a path on Tilly Mill. That's a lot going on on Tilly Mill. Second, parks, paths, and infrastructure. Mr. Lambert mentioned at the retreat that the committee, the Citizens Capital Advisory Committee, met one time, and they had input. But we only saw the committee one time, and at least four of the committee members voiced tremendous concern about paths around Dunwoody because they were able to talk with many of the neighborhoods and neighbors who were against certain paths in their neighborhoods because they would adversely affect many neighbors and the neighborhoods. The committee members listened to the constituents. Additionally, the committee has not been reconvened for further input from them as was promised. Bonds being considered, fifty-nine million dollars, that's a lot of money. And of course, police department needs. Lastly, there is always a way to achieve good without inflicting harm. We ask you council members to use the four ethics principles you have established to govern with those principles always in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Hickey, Mr. Hickey.
Madam Mayor, Council, my name is Bob Hickey. I'm a resident of Dunwoody. I've lived here forty-five plus years. I'm following up a little bit on what Mr. Simon said about the recent resolution you adopted about ethics for the city of Dunwoody and the council and their employees. It's my observation, you can talk the talk, but you sure can't walk the walk, okay? And there's a big difference between the two. Ethics would include giving citizens adequate notice. A retreat, three days is not an adequate notice.
Can I start your time over? Chief, there's someone trying to do the security thing back there, just.
Probably my guard.
Right, I'm glad you have one. I don't, I don't.
No, it may be not for me.
Right. Oh, okay. Start the clock again, Sharon. Go ahead, Mr. Hickey. I'm sorry to interrupt.
You have to restart. You need to walk the walk. You talked the talk on your resolution. Now you need to walk the walk. And a three-day notice for citizens who are involved in civic citizen duties and activities and what the hell is going on need more than a three-day notice on your retreat, okay? And a three-day notice to go to an out-of-town retreat. We spend millions of dollars in discovered Dunwoody, and you go to the mountains. Now, is that walk in the walk? No, that's not even good talk the talk. Now, after you go to the mountains for a couple of days, you won't publish the agenda packet, okay? Citizens are entitled to the documents that are provided to the council by the staff before, after, during the meeting. Put it on the website with the agenda pack. Walk the walk. If you have any ethics, walk the walk. I've checked in the last fifteen months, fifteen months, okay? Every public meeting, or council meeting, okay, has had the agenda packet published, with the exception of how many do you guess? How many do you guess didn't have an agenda packet? Well, start with two for the retreat in twenty twenty-two. Two, no packet, okay? We had to scrounge and dig and look to get what was supplied by staff to the council and mayor for that meeting. And where is another two? I wonder where? Two more recent ones. We are entitled to the data that is supplied by staff to the mayor and council without having to go on, I've been told, I think, six times. You can file an open record request for these. Why should I have to file an open record request for stuff that should be put on the website? Walk the walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. They're ready. Sorry.
I'm Mike Gialaretti, live at fifteen oh-six Thornhill Court. So as I've mentioned in my previous comments, I'm not opposed to the idea of a personal care facility. My opposition to this application ultimately comes down to code violations and the massive size and scale. While the application has been updated, it still does not meet code or SLOP requirements for what should be approved. I will not reiterate the code violations previously mentioned, as I believe those are clear, but do want to expand upon my parking comments. The current application includes a seven-person care facility and residential use. Sticking solely to the parking issue, this clearly is not sufficient. Mount Vernon serves as the main artery connecting parts of Sandy Springs, Roswell, Peachtree Corners, Norcross, Johns Creek, and Duluth to the perimeter area. Mount Vernon can be a heavily traveled road and one that is not the most safe at times. What happens on a holiday, a Saturday, or any other peak time when seniors living at the facility have guests coming to see them? Let's keep in mind the state law cannot limit access. So if we have individuals living at the facility, they will have a car. Also, there will be at least one car for a worker. At a minimum, we have two cars at all times. It could be more than two cars if there's anyone else visiting the resident at the facility, if we have more residents that have a car there, or if there is more than one worker there. In any case, I think two at a minimum at all times is a fair assumption. So if there are more than two of the seven seniors that have guests coming to see them, where are these cars going to park? The most likely spot is either on Mount Vernon Way, close to the light at Mount Vernon Road, or on Vernon Ridge Drive. So if we have a car or multiple cars parked on Mount Vernon Way, this significantly increases the likelihood of accidents in the area. There will be cars turning from Mount Vernon onto Mount Vernon Way where there is regular traffic, enough regular traffic that it requires a stoplight. Also, if you've ever driven down Mount Vernon Way going north to Mount Vernon Road, you will know that there is limited visibility coming through the intersection because there is a crest in the road. Our roads are not designed to accommodate the massive size and scale of a facility like this. In addition to not meeting the SLOP requirements for parking, the proposed structure does not pass the comparability requirement. Further, it's not in compliance with the Dunwoody's residential use code exceeds, still exceeds impervious surface thresholds and fails to consider state law. Therefore, I'm asking city council to reject this application or at a minimum defer it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mintron Tran?
Good evening, Council. My name is Ming, and I reside five one oh-nine Vernon Ridge. I'm here to also express my opposition to the special use permit. Despite the updated proposal, the plan is to exceed the maximum allowed by three point five percent. So it is inappropriate to call this a marginal deviations as a proposal is still still over by ten percent. Allowing a developer to violate this code openly would set a very dangerous precedent. So what's next, ten percent on the setbacks? So I urge the council to clamp down on this thirty-five percent. And I also question the accuracy of the impervious area presented by the engineering firm. From the onset, their drawing contained numerous critical errors with the size and the impervious area. Even on the eighth revision that they just submitted, the site development plans listed the total impervious of point two-six acres or over eleven thousand square feet. And then on the runoff calculation, it is showing point two-one acre or slightly over nine thousand square feet. So I request that the city demand a detailed calculation from the applicant to verify that the engineering firm have done their work right because there's just too many conflict numbers for such a critical aspect of this application. Regarding the parking, the city itself, the city itself do not allow any parking structure to be built in a residential area. It's not in the city onwards that it's stated. Any structure that change the residential nature is prohibited, including parking lot. And the applicant claimed that because of no resident drive, therefore reduce the demand for parking is irrelevant. The parking is there to serve the visitor and the staff, and it is commonly accepted throughout the state that the minimum requirement for parking is point five parking space per resident or employees. So that would put this about six parking lot and one ADA. Hence, they submitted the original's request for a seven parkings, but then that would reject it. Then how can a three parking space be enough for staff and visitors during peak town such as holidays? Are they going to park on the street and then get away when they visit their loved one? Despite this rejection, they have not made any operational changes to address the reduction in parking. So there's a shooting in the dark and then hope that after they get approved, they would sort this out. And this is not how a business should conduct their business. So I urge the council to take into considerations and then at least oppose. Thank you.
Thank. Tina Walden? Make sure you speak in the microphone, please.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm Tina Walden, thirty-year resident living on Dunwoody Club Drive. I am here to speak to you in support of the proposed twenty-four million dollar bound referendum to fund the pedestrian and bike facilities in Dunwoody. As a member of the Dunwoody Art Commission, I have been the recipient of many compliments concerning the Green Light Art Project that our group has put forth. And there are other projects that we have been up to that you will have seen, such as the bike rack at Brook Run and others to come. And I think that this referendum would allow us to work closely with the city to continue on in that light and bring art into the daily lives of all of our citizens. And also, as a mom of a special needs child, I want to tell you that it's very important to have a safe place to go with a child to walk, and sidewalks aren't always the safest when you're dealing with somebody who is on the spectrum. And having a trail system is extremely important to those who aren't as able-bodied as the rest of us. So I just wanted you to keep that in mind and please support the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Shortall?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Danny Shortall, twenty-eleven Woodland Way in the great city of Dunwoody, Georgia. I'm here tonight. I don't have anybody close to me that's got a personal care home, but I'm here to talk about the citizens that I think are kind of being pushed aside here with this requirement. I'm okay with personal care homes. Just don't put them in residential areas. If you want to put one in Dunwoody Village, Perimeter Mall, any place like that, okay? If any one of you want a personal care home next to your personal residence, and you can convince the people within a two-block radius that they all are okay with it, go for it. I'm okay with that, too. If it's in section twenty-seven, let's take it out. Five years ago, we had a bill in the Golden Dome that said they would totally restrict us from putting forth requirements for zoning. We went down there, and I think the mayor went with us. And we met with the committee down there, and when we left on it, we got a bipartisan promise from two Republicans and the top Democrat that the bill was dead on arrival. So we can control our zoning, and we can keep it to what the citizens want. You know, when we became a city, we promised them zoning control. That was the number-one issue. They wanted local control close to home. They wanted to be able to know who we were. We promised them low taxes and to be good stewards of our tax dollars, underline that. Adequate police force to protect our citizens because that wasn't being done. Take control of our parks and do the best of our ability, do what we could to enhance our schools. The citizens put forth their trust in what we told the citizens by a rate of twenty, excuse me, eighty-one percent. If we would have told them that, oh, by the way, you know, we're going to put a personal care home next to you. Oh, by the way, we're going to raise your taxes. Oh, and by the way, you know, we're going to do other things that you didn't like. We wouldn't be a city today. That wouldn't be behind you. There was two people here, myself and John Henning, that worked on this thing quite, quite a bit, a lot of sweat equity in the city. So take a good look at this thing, especially you got a bond issue coming up. You know, that was already been tried once here. It went down by two to one vote. But take a good look at them and listen to your citizens out here. Listen to their concern. That's who we, what I used to, and all of us that have ever had office in the city represent. So make sure you're doing a good job of it and listen to what they're telling you. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Blaine Shelton? Sharon, how much time is left?
I'm Blaine Shelton, twenty-year resident of Dunwoody, right around the corner from the proposed property. Be really quick. I don't want to rehash all the things that were said about the zoning, the code and the violations. I think it's pretty clear that's the case. So I've been a quiet resident. Place beforehand was a disaster. Cars parked everywhere. The applicant seems to want credit for taking ownership of the property and then tearing it down. They acted, portrayed themselves. I just put this out. Things aren't as they seem. They tore the property down, and it seems like they want, they were unsuspecting. They found all this mold, and they found all these problems with it. And then they decide that they, but all of a sudden, they have a waiting list. So that doesn't seem like, those two things don't jive. So if you tear something down and get rid of it, that's tantamount to, and then ask for all these code leniency, that's like murdering your parents and asking for forgiveness because you're an orphan. They have this property that's out there that's, now it's a disaster. And now they want to build something on it. They've not been very forthcoming. They've portrayed themselves, and they've actually put words in our mouths, portrayed us as people who don't want people from the outside coming in here. It's not very professional. You have to ask yourself, if I go into a relationship with somebody in a business or a personal, whatever, and the beginning of it is this flawed and based on such, you know, disingenuousness, I go the other way. I don't, I don't think, maybe I'll change them. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go in there and start this process and if it's flawed from the inception, from the inducement, then I'll walk away. So, and that's what I would advise us to do. If you have any questions, the last thing I'd say is they're threatening a lawsuit now. This is a mom and pop, and they're going to go big on legal fees and how much, what's their basis going to be in this property? I don't know for sure. Is that, do they have that budget? Or are they being backed by somebody else that has plans? If you drive up and down Mount Vernon, there's plenty of places they could put other things just like this there. So I would keep that in mind. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carrie Downing, five zero nine five Ashmont Court. Obviously, I'm here to oppose the SLOP. Just a couple of things. I think we're opening up a box of unintended consequences. So if this law is a residential use, they're trying to put a memory care facility into this residential home that could have accommodated that until they built it down, and I understand that's not what happened. But are we going to allow residents to have thirty-eight percent lot coverage? No. I have friends that get turned down all the time who are trying to do expansions on their homes who are current residents, who are living in their homes, doing what they're supposed to be doing in residential areas, and they are denied. I don't think anybody here has a problem with the use. We have a problem with folks coming in and trying to pull one over and go outside the boundaries of the residential code. And I think that's the concern, is we're trying to keep our neighborhood a neighborhood. That's really all I have to say about that. You know, just try to keep the lot coverage and try to keep it residential, make it look like the other homes. It needs a garage. You know, I think we've all been over, you know, what's going to happen if they're not there anymore. We can't control that, and the SLOP stays with the land. It doesn't stay with the business owner. So just a couple of things to keep in mind, and you know, you might have a whole lot of folks coming in here saying, I wanted to expand my property, and I couldn't do it, but you sure let that memory care facility do it. So I've got a memory secure facility coming, and I'm going to build a wing, and you need to grant me a SLOP because they did it, and then, oh, never mind, I'm not going to do it. So if you build it, and they need to use it as a home, they can, and you can't tear down what's already there. Thank you. Thank you. I think I'm having a really hard time reading my last card. It could be a lot of different things. Is it, is it you, Mr. Washington? Okay, Sharon, we have three minutes left at least. Okay, you have three minutes. Come on up.
Good evening, Council. Just briefly, there's been a lot of reference to the constitutional objection letter. As an attorney, it's my ethical duty to make sure that I get as part of the record constitutional objections, even if we don't plan on pursuing them. To not do so would be a dereliction of my duty as an attorney. So hopefully, that isn't imputed on the applicant. I have an obligation to make sure that we point out any and every ground that there might be reason to appeal for. That is part of every application that we do, and I have to state the name and the reasons for that. So to the extent that that calls the community to think that we're imputing something on them, that was not at all the intention. Secondarily, all engineering reports have been done in conjunction with the city of Dunwoody's engineer. We have our engineer. They work in conjunction with the city's engineer. So this is not some unprofessional person making calculations. This has all been done in conjunction with the engineer. Similarly, the professional staff recommendation of approval, the planning commission staff recommendation of approval, all have been done in conjunction with looking at the code, which states that if you want a special land use permit, personal care facilities are permitted under the code. Not only permitted under the code, but they also are permitted and encouraged under the future land use plan. That is this council's plan for how you will house seniors in the future. This is not us coming with some idea that was not contemplated by this council and this administration finally, and most importantly, putting seniors here, putting this house here is not inconsistent with what happens on Tilly Mill Row in Mount Vernon, on Mount Vernon Ridge, where there are houses that are new and modern and a lot larger than the existing split level of mid-century modern houses. You can drive all around the city of Dunwoody and see any number of examples of new, larger houses on smart lights. And the code permits us to have as much as sixty percent lots coverage. We're trying to do our best, our level best, to make sure that we give senior residents adequate room to live and to exist, and at the same time, be consistent with the look and feel of the county. So finally, you know, I'm sure the council might have questions, but I want to personally say that nothing about the letter was intended to impute on the character of the citizens of the city. It would be regrettable that if that was a thought, because that is not at all, that's just my legal and ethical obligation to submit that letter. So, but that outfalls.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We will have another section of public comment at the end of this meeting, if anyone is still here and wants to comment. We're often quite lonely at the end of a meeting. And also, just to point a personal privilege, Mr. Simon, the fish fry was outstanding. Barry and I were there three or four times. And the baked goods, always top-notch, too. So thank you for leading that effort in our community. All right, with that, I believe we have a presentation from Stage Door Theater. Brent, are you going to help start it, anything, or just maybe introduce Justin?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
All right, with that, I believe we have a presentation from Stage Door Theater. Brent, are you gonna help start it? Anything or just maybe introduce Justin?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, as part of our ongoing conversations with our nonprofit partners, Justin Ball from Stage Door Theater is here to present uh where they are as an organization. Justin kind of came in right at the beginning of COVID and has done a phenomenal job of keeping the organization going. It's brought in some phenomenal new programs uh, to the building and to the community. Uh, so he's going to touch on all this tonight. So I'm going to pull up his presentation and get out of his way.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to speak to you tonight on behalf of Stage Door Theater. Um, as Brent mentioned, I joined the organization last October, so I just celebrated my uh year and a half of the organization. Um, and I couldn't be more pleased to share with you the growth and the new direction of our organization. Um, as you see here, we have a new mission, new model and a new direction.
I think it needs to be enlarged. I think it's needs to be something, Brent, full screen.
Brent, is the green light on?
Yeah, there. Oh, the microphone. You, Justin, if you could make sure you speak into the microphone, please.
Sure. You'd think after two degrees, I would know how to do this.
Yes.
Um, so Stage Door Theater has a new mission statement. Uh, our mission is to strengthen our vibrant community of patrons, artists and youth by providing an intimate and inclusive home where uh stories and human experiences are celebrated. Um, the way that we're doing that is by uh adopting a new model and we're, we're diversifying our revenue by building partnerships um, and creating new artistic education and outreach programs, which are new to Stage Door. Um, and as I said, our new direction is mostly focusing on education and outreach, family programming and cultural arts. So this is, we are halfway through season forty nine here at Stage Door. Um, this year we've offered a, a main stage program with Ordinary Days, Twas the Night Before Christmas, Completeness, The Niceties. Um, and right now we're about to go into rehearsals for our final show of the season, which is Peter and the Starcatcher. This year, we also introduced our Spotlight Series, which turns a spotlight on local artists and arts organizations. Our inaugural partnership was with Dad's Garage. Um, they agreed to do six workshops with us this year. Um, the first three were sold out. We have another one on April twenty second. Um, we've just agreed to extend that relationship next season. We're going to be doing more partnerships with Dad's Garage. Um, and we're also going to be adding a Monday night adult improv class uh for, for residents. So hopefully that will be a, a big hit. Um, we also did a concert series last summer. We did a, a stage and screen cabaret that featured musicals uh that have uh featured both on the, the the silver screen and the uh Great White Way. Um, our academy, as many of you know, we launched an academy at the height of the pandemic. Um, right now we offer year round classes and workshops for kids uh three to eighteen. We offered a spring break camp for the first time this year. Uh, we are in our third year of doing summer camps, um, which I'll talk more about in a second. Um, this year we've offered four performance opportunities for our academy students. We did zombie prom in the fall, which was by far our highest uh, uh, attended academy show. Um, I know the mayor was there. I think some other uh friendly faces around the room were there. We did a free winter concert in December uh featuring our junior and senior academy students. Uh, we're in tech week right now for Treasure Island. It opens on Friday. We're already at eighty percent capacity. Um, and we're hoping to sell out before the weekend. Um, and then this summer we'll be doing a production of Puffs, uh, which is loosely based off of um Harry Potter, but we're not allowed to say Harry Potter. Um, most uh importantly, this year we started a, a new partnership with Dunwoody Elementary School. Um, we're calling it the Arts Accessibility Project. Uh, we spent fifty five classroom hours with, with first and second grade students. We got the opportunity to teach the basics of performing arts. Um, where we talked about everything from standing up and articulating to character, story development, conflict. Um, and from those workshops, we are now uh able to invite those same students to come to Peter and the Starcatcher this May. And so that they're going to see theater uh up close and personal. And those same teachers who were in the, the classroom with them will be leading a, a, a talk back with the cast on stage. So they're going to get to learn how to uh attach the terms that they learned in class with an actual production. Um, and we couldn't be more thrilled about the direction of that program. Um, this year we also partnered with the city of Dunwoody. We were the, the rain location for the AAPI event. We were happy to, to be able to host that for the city this year. Um, and we, we supported the, the Latino Cultural Heritage Celebration, which was in the courtyard. But of course, um, we helped Rose Marie and, and her team in, in advance of that. Our impact this year, so far, we've impacted uh six thousand patrons from over a hundred metro Atlanta zip codes. We've employed over a hundred and fifty artists. Um, our education program has fifty kids enrolled in our uh fall and spring classes. This summer, we anticipate uh well exceeding three hundred kids in our summer camps. Um, we have offered twelve full and partial scholarships, thanks in large part to our partnership with the Dunwoody Women's Club, who helped us uh create that inaugural uh fund. Um, as I said, we reached two hundred and seventy five kids through our Arts Accessibility Project. We have new partnerships with senior groups. We've uh affected seventy five seniors. We have twenty community partnerships and ten corporate partnerships, more of which I'll talk about in a moment. As I mentioned, the Stage Door Performing Arts Academy, we launched it at the height of the pandemic. In our first year, we had fifty kids uh in our summer camps. Last summer, we had two hundred and seven kids. Uh, this year we already have three hundred kids enrolled and we sold a hundred on our first twenty four hours of registration being open. Um, and that is in large partner, uh, uh, in large part due to our partnership with the Spruill Art Center, uh, which we're thrilled about and, and happy to continue to grow. So our new model, um, for those of you who aren't familiar, uh, the nonprofit theater model is a strange one. Um, and normally uh ticket sales comprise fifty percent of a nonprofit theater's uh annual revenue. The other fifty percent comes from individual giving, corporate partnerships, foundation and grant support, um, or additional streams of revenue. Um, as you'll see here, the, the model for Stage Door leading into the pandemic was that ninety two percent of our revenue came from ticket sales or individuals. Um, and that is just not a sustainable model in the long term. Um, there are cultural trends, there are nationwide pandemics, there are things that just come up and that, that uh heavy reliance on a on a, on a single source of revenue is, is problems for nonprofits. So what we have tried to do this year in our, in, in my first year is diversify our revenue as much as possible. Um, so you will see on the, the slide on the right, um, ticket sales now only comprise thirty seven percent. And we're making up that difference with our education program, with our uh events, with our corporate partnerships, with our new government uh relationships. Um, so that we are not relying on one show being bad on our main stage and us wondering if we can keep the doors open. Um, we're, we're strengthening uh our model so that we can be in Dunwoody for another fifty years and continue to serve this community. Uh, this is an update on season forty nine through our first two quarters. So we're not just uh talking the talk. As a gentleman said earlier, we are also walking the walk. Um, we are actually bringing in the revenue in these new areas that we have never had before. Um, and so we're pretty thrilled that for the first six months after a, a pretty tough year for the arts, um, that we are, uh, all signs are pointing to, to a healthy organization at this point. Um, as I said earlier, partnerships are the new, are the lifeblood of this organization. And the way that we will continue to thrive and prove ourselves to this community is by building more and more partnerships. Um, so as I said, we built a partnership with Spruill where our camps have been co-branded. We built a partnership with Dunwoody Public Library. Just past Saturday, we hosted their Storytime on our set for Treasure Island. It was a free event. Thirty one residents came. Um, we have a new partnership with Adult Day of Dunwoody, where we're going to be bringing monthly programming to their seniors to talk about uh dementia care and the, the role of drama therapy. Um, as I mentioned, Dunwoody Women's Club, we partnered with to start a scholarship program. Dunwoody Elementary, we've served two hundred and seventy five of their kids. Dad's Garage is one of our community partners. And for next season, we're going to be announcing partnerships with Piccadilly Puppets to offer Saturday puppet shows in our space. Um, and also a World Music Festival next summer uh with uh Jay Patank, who is one of the wonderful residents of Dunwoody. Um, our corporate partnerships have really expanded. Um, uh, previous to the pandemic, we, we averaged uh around six thousand dollars a year in corporate partnerships. Um, and this year we're anticipating closer to forty thousand dollars. Um, uh, Discover Dunwoody has been a partner. Northside Hospital came in as a major sponsor this year. DRB, Popcorn Palooza, Sharp Real Estate, Junction Creative, Art and Associates, Piedmont Bank. And this is just the beginning of how we want to develop relationships with the city. Because these people recognize the value of what we're bringing and they also recognize us as an economic catalyst for this community, um, which I'll talk more about in a moment. We also have foundation partners in addition to the city of Dunwoody. We have the Imlay Foundation, South Arts, Community Foundation for Greater Atlanta, Georgia Council for the Arts, Children's Theater Foundation of America, and then NEA. And so that brings us to the future of Stage Door. So season forty nine has been going gangbusters, but we are in the midst of planning season fifty, which is a pretty enormous milestone here in, in, in Atlanta. There are very few other theaters who have reached such a, an occasion. Um, and so we're really excited to, to bring uh new programming and new opportunities. Um, we are hoping to launch season fifty with a free event in late August that we're calling um season fifty Tailgate. It's going to have free events. Uh, we're going to hopefully have food trucks. Kids can come into the dressing rooms and get their face painted. There'll be free Dad's Garage workshops in one of the rooms. There'll be open classes in our classrooms so that kids can check out the academy. Um, we would love to have a free event that showcases all that we contribute to this community and all that we offer and uh provide an opportunity for people to come out and learn more about us. Because even though we've been here for forty nine years, it is astonishing how many times I meet people in the community who say, I didn't know there was a theater in Dunwoody. I drive by that all the time. Or I've been at the library twenty times, but I didn't know there was a theater down the hall. Um, so we're working really hard to change that reputation and hopefully season fifty will be a great opportunity for that. So I'll quickly go through what our, what our announcement is for season fifty. This is brand new. I've announced it anywhere else. Um, so our season is going to be starting with Tuesdays with Maury. Um, for those of you who don't know, it is a classic novel that was turned into a stage play. It was on the New York Times Bestseller for four years. Um, and it is our hope that that will really entice some of our older uh clientele here in Dunwoody. Uh, that's going to be followed up with our holiday show. This year we're doing It's a Wonderful Life. It is a, a radio play version. So onstage, there will actually be a fully artist making some of the sounds and there's music and it's, it really will be a lovely new holiday tradition here in Dunwoody. Followed by, uh, we're doing a new musical uh called The Mad Hatterpillar. Um, it got its start at Synchronicity's Stripped Bear Festival last year and got a lot of notoriety from the arts community. Um, this will be our TYA slot of the season, meaning theater for a young audience. Um, that will be the show next season that we work with school groups to do education matinees. Um, and then my hope is that this will be our show in season fifty and then season fifty one on, it will actually be a touring production that we can bring outside of Dunwoody to as many Title One schools as we can in the region, uh, again, to bring the arts uh to as many humans as we can. And then we're going to conclude our main stage season with Native Gardens. Uh, this was a, a smash hit at the Aurora five years ago, but it hasn't been done in the Atlanta proper uh, uh, region, and it is a very comedic play about um dueling neighbors. There's a hose fight on stage. You can't, you don't want to miss it. Um, as I mentioned, our Spotlight Series is expanding. Not only are we continuing with Dad's Garage, but we're adding Piccadilly Puppets and a World Music Festival next year. Our academy is doing four shows. We have the Descendants in the fall, our winter concert in the winter. Appropriately, um, Alice in Wonderland will be in the spring and the next summer we'll be doing a play called She Kills Monsters. So that brings us to our challenges. Obviously, there's been a lot that has been going positively in, in our organization. There's a lot to champion. There's a lot to, uh, to be excited about. But obviously, the performing arts have taken a huge hit in the last few years. Um, for those of you who aren't familiar, the Lyric Theater closed its doors last month for the, they had been in operation for forty three seasons. Um, and they were getting ready to go into rehearsals for their next show and overnight the board decided to dissolve the organization. Um, there were three other nonprofit theaters that at the end of last season all did emergency campaigns to just stay afloat. Uh, Georgia Ensemble Theater uh did a campaign for two hundred and fifty thousand. On Stage Atlanta did a campaign for a hundred thousand. Horizon Theater did a campaign. Um, the state of the arts have not rebounded yet. Um, the Lyric Theater, for them to stay afloat, had to operate at sixty five percent capacity. And since COVID, they have not peaked above thirty five. Um, and that is a trend that is not exclusive to them. That is happening nationwide. That is happening in all the theaters in Atlanta right now. Um, and so we are all scrapping very hard to get as much of this funding in place as possible to get us over this, this initial hump. Um, and of course, one of the challenges that Stage Door faces that is unique to us is all of those organizations have access to the Atlanta Mayor's Council uh of the Arts, where they provide hundreds of thousands of dollars of funding uh to those organizations a year. But we actually do not qualify um as a, as a member of the city of Dunwoody. Um, so we can't apply for those funds. So um, that is one of the challenges that we're facing. Um, obviously, we have uh, a, a wonderful relationship with the city of Dunwoody, but there are areas that need further clarification. Um, uh, in my first year, I've had developed wonderful professional relationships with Brent and his team at Parks and Rec, with Jennifer and her team at Communications, with a handful of council members, um, all of whom have shown great support and um enthusiasm for the new direction of Stage Door. Um, but there there seems to be a need to revisit our usage agreement to, to, to gain some clarity. Um, for example, I, I'm still confused as to who is responsible for making our building ADA compliant. Is that a responsibility of the owner of the building? Is it responsible of the, the leasing? Um, because right now, if I were to do a show Tuesdays with Maury, which has a gentleman in a wheelchair, that wheelchair can't fit backstage. It can't fit through the doors. So is that, is that our responsibility or is that the city's? Furthermore, the sorry, give me, bear with me for two seconds. We also went through the, the difficult hurdle of uh getting our liquor license this year so we could start uh providing beer and wine. And through that process, um, the difficult and uh expensive process of, of making that available. Um, we had to go through hurdles to prove to the city what zone their building was in, in order to get the permission to, to have the license, um, which feels strange uh as, as, as a leasing of the building. We also discovered in that time that there was no city, there was no certificate of, of occupancy for anybody in the cultural arts building, not for us, not for Spruill, not for the library. So the question becomes who is enforcing the code? Who is making sure that these, these um standards are being, uh, are, are being held up? Um, and is it, is it our responsibility or is it the cities in these situations? Obviously, many arts organizations receive support from their, their local city governments. Um, and it is something that we also would love uh additional support from the city. I know we get, gain a great deal from Parks and Rec in terms of the building maintenance. Uh, but the reality is we're, we're operating in a sixty year old elementary school, um, and that brings with it a great deal of challenges. Um, in the last year alone, we've had leaks in our electrical closet that damaged equipment. We had leaks in our furniture room storage that damaged uh resources. Um, you know, for the last nine months, we haven't been able to control the temperature in our building because the HVAC system is so ancient and there's different ones that are trying to communicate to each other. And there's you know, uh, supply chain issues. Um, but we haven't been able to control the temperature in our building. Um, th- these are just small little things, but when uh a student during the academy production in April throws up backstage because we can't control the temperature in the building, that becomes a problem. We can't open and close the windows in our rehearsal room because once they open, they can't close. Um, there's damage, uh, there's water damage to our rehearsal room wall because the, the hill to the back of our building, there's no drainage built in. So water just sits there and it's now buckling and mold is, is growing. Um, so there are a lot of challenges um within the building itself that we would love support um beyond what Brent and his team can do. And, and mainly the things that we need as an organization. Um, we need a sign. Someone that tells the residents of this city who we are and where we are. Um, and we need uh a new floor in our rehearsal room that is safe for uh students to uh perform, dance and act on. Um, we need new toilets backstage. It's still an elementary school. And during my last play, I had to ask a sixty year old woman to sit on the elementary school sized toilet backstage. It's just these little things, but they really do add up in terms of, of our day to day operations. Um, so my request is that we revisit the usage agreement and figure out a mutually beneficial uh terms that shows uh the city's support of the local arts community and also shows how we can return the favor. Um, I love the idea of hosting more cultural arts events. Um, but I would love to do it in a way that is mutually beneficial, that we're not just giving our space to you guys, but we're either renting it or it's in exchange for a rent reduction or any of the other number of ways that we can figure out how to, how, how to have a mutually beneficial relationship there. So that said, in conclusion, I feel really proud of the direction that Stage Door has taken in the last year and a half. Uh, and it is in large part between a very small staff. There's three individuals who work with me who work tirelessly to make these things happen. Um, I have an incredible board of directors of nine people who work extremely hard to, to, to support the vision of this organization. Uh, and I'm really excited to talk about how we can partner together to keep investing in Dunwoody and the arts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have board members here and your other staff, if you'd like them to stand up and introduce them or just stand?
Former board members here, but I do not have any current board members because we have a board meeting tomorrow.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. All right. Um, I'm sure that there may be some questions. Anybody questions? Raise your hand. Nope. So I want to start and then if that's okay. Right, right. So many years ago, my now thirty one year old son was in fourth grade. So it makes him what, like nine? And he was in Joseph in the multicolor.
Amazing technical.
Yeah, that. Um, he played one of the uh brothers, played Benjamin, actually, and that's his name. And it was a main stage performance, but it changed the dynamics of who knew that theater was there. Because not only did my family go all the time, but our friends did and our neighbors did because they, and but there was not just him. It was a cast of many colors. And the cast of a lot of kids. And so the previous director didn't love working with children, uh, children, I think was the way it was told to me. And that was the only time they ever did that. I'm thrilled with your academy initiative. I think it's going to continue to grow and let people know that you're there. Um, because while it's great that you've had the space of support in our community, if we, if you don't change, who knows about you, then when they stop coming because of a global pandemic potentially or whatever, then there's no one there to take their space. So I appreciate all your efforts that you're doing. then there's no one there to take their space. So I appreciate all your efforts that you're doing with children. Eric, I thought we put a new roof on that building, certainly in the last decade or so. Because I was on council when we did it, right, John? So if the, if Brent, if the building is leaking, is that from something other than the roof?
No, but I don't think it was a roof leak. We do have some water intrusion from the back between the upper parking lot and the back wall of what their dance studio is. Re quotes in right now to remediate that. So we did a lot of renovations on the building, if y'all remember, to that room and to the foyer in those areas. We did spots. So what we're finding now, and Justin and I spoke, we would like to put in eventually a dance floor in there, but we need to get that water infiltration through the block repaired before that.
So later tonight, we're going to have a discussion on our Shallowford sale. Potentially, there's potential pockets of money that that we could potentially choose to invest in bringing that stage up to standards or the theater up to standards potentially. So when we get to that part of the agenda, if you could maybe be prepared to just give us a quick overview. But the roof is in good shape, right? Cause we didn't do the library because anyway, which I thought was kind of ridiculous, but but the roof itself is relatively new and.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We, it was about a three hundred thousand dollar membrane roof. We put on maybe eight years. So the roof is is still under warranty. So they're typically with those roofs that there's leaks is from around the edges. It's not the membrane around it or if there was a penetration from somebody going up there to work on HVAC systems.
Okay. All right. Well, we will circle back and also just want to be clear because there's a lot of people here and watching. We, when we became a city, the previous mayor, who was part of the efforts, we didn't give funds to nonprofits. That wasn't part of the city's model. The funds that have gone out recently have been through ARP, through federal dollars that we received. And so just as council discusses things, you know, that's just, I want it to be clear that, yeah, that's where we are. Okay. Thank you. And Eric, circle back on the ADA issue and all that and come back to us with an answer.
And we will.
And Brett can talk about it a little bit during the Capitol. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate everything you've done. Very impressed. Really impressed with your revenue changes and all that. I didn't get to say that, but now I've said it. Eric Lynn, the city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the manager's report from last month. The Parks Department, we do have lemonade days coming up on April twentieth through the twenty third. That's right around the corner. We also have the food truck is kicking off on Thursdays, April, starting April twenty seventh. So that's starting, the spring is definitely here and those are big kickoffs every year that we have. Snapdragon Garden Exhibit will return, or actually it returned on the twenty fifth in partnership with the Parks Dunwoody Community Garden and Orchard. Also, we have the new summer camp offering Spark with overtime athletics is a sports program for kids ages three through six to expose them to new sport type activities. There's also a job posting for a temporary recreational leader. And that will, that's open now and the position that will support the recreation staff from May through October for events set up nights and weekends and enforcement of facility rental and field permits. And that's something the council members had asked for a while back, just to help with that department. And as we expand activities outside of City Hall. The Public Works Department has our road resurfacing to begin in May. We have sent some notices out to the neighbors. It will be, will be paving. We have a list, comprehensive list of the roads that we pave this year. Also, the Georgetown Gateway Project that we are completing the landscaping and Georgia Power setting the streetlight poles on the northern half of that corridor. We're still working on some utilities on the other end of the project. Winter's Chapel Trail Phase One, Georgia Power has completed the conduit and the wiring for the streetlights. And the landscaping is scheduled for later this month as well. There's also a picture in your packet that shows some of that landscaping. Dunwoody Road sidewalk of the gas main is being relocated. That project's expected to be complete in April, but the road will be closed until the summer with the rest of the improvements in that area. Also, one of our main items that we do is infrastructure. Our stormwater pipe rehabilitation has been using ARP funding to continue repairs. Over a hundred pipes in twelve neighborhoods throughout the city. At the end of March, contractors have aligned about twenty two hundred feet of pipe. So that's a pro- program that we're trying to protect our underground network of piping. The department also replaced over two hundred outdated signs in the Kingsley neighborhood. And these are signs that go back to when that neighborhood was actually constructed in the late sixties, early seventies to get that, those signs replaced. High Street celebrated its topping out on March thirty first and what that means is that's the, as high as that building's going to go at this point. For those of y'all who were there with the council during that, or if you have not been, please go at some point. I invite the citizens to drive by there. If they'd like to get more information, please talk to community development. That is a very transformative project within the city. So take time to look on, look out at that project. It's a beautiful layout. The Path Foundation has also completed its first draft of the Dunwoody Trail Master Plan. The city council will see that draft at the next council meeting. The Planning and Zoning Division has started the Green Communities Recertification Process. As y'all know, that's a major initiative of the city to try to be as green as possible. For economic development, placemaking continues to be a major item. That we're working on implementing Phase Two and Three of our Green Light Art Project. Also working with artists for the mosaic on the retaining wall at Stanley Dunwoody Road and Womack Road. And also the large scale mural to be installed at the Dunwoody Martyr Station. That we've done this spring. So that's something to really look out for as well. In terms of the other part of economic development, they've conducted eighty three business retention meetings as well as eighteen business recruitment calls over the past month. For Communications, we're planning the Two Bridges Park opening on Saturday, May sixth. So I do invite the entire community out for that. That's a great initiative here within the perimeter center area to have a park within within this part of the community. So that is very exciting and has a water feature and many other things. We're hoping for good weather so the kids can get out there and enjoy the water feature. Also, Kathy Florence was crowned Miss Lemonade Days as well as out of that department. It's just a little fun, fun fact we have there. The Police Department, the staff members are participating in the Peachtree Middle School Career Day on May eighteenth of this year. Also, we continue to conduct crosswalk detail and hands free detail. On March the twenty third, officers issued four vulnerable road users citations at Peter Road and Lundry Court. Also twenty seven hands free violations were issued at Nandina and Mount Vernon Road. Of course, both of those are busy intersections. We want to maintain the safety of our pedestrians and other non-motorized citizens that utilize the roads as well. It was in the Finance Department is the monthly report that has to the end of February. There's a link that can be found there. And also our external auditors began on Monday, March the twentieth to do our annual audit. So that is what I have. That concludes my report. Staff is here as well as I am to answer any questions you may have on the document before you.
Questions, comments, anybody? Catherine.
Thank you, Eric, for a very thorough report. If we ever, citizens ever wonder what the city's up to, there it is every month, detail by detail. We appreciate that. Two questions on Public Works, one about the Spalding Drive at Stanley Dunwoody. And it says final site restoration. Does that mean a paving such that the bump is removed?
Is is Michael back?
Yep, he's coming.
Here it goes. Thank you.
The the site restoration referring to all the grading and landscaping and everything, the, we are working on getting the paving done on Spalding in the next month or so and not waiting on the paving we're doing on Dunwoody Road.
Oh, okay. And then my next question will be Dunwoody Road. So you're saying, or it's suggesting summer and summer's a long time. So is it? What's a general expectation?
Well, you know, they're relocating the gas line main now and then once they do that, they have to build a retaining wall that they have to have the road opened up, part of that to build a retaining wall. And then once the retaining wall's done, we could open the road back up. I think the current schedule is by July.
Oh, okay. So as well into summer. It'll be a while.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we appreciate all citizens' patience with this very large project. It's going to be great. Thank you.
Chief, I have a couple of questions, please. Chief, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
The partnership with the Community Service Board, DeKalb Community Service Board, has that started?
Not yet. We just got the contract signed. Eric signed it today, so we're getting it to them. We've got a meeting set up next week with DeKalb CSB and Dorville PD to work out all the particular details.
Okay, great. Will you let Eric know if in a month or so they haven't been able to place anybody?
They've already got someone.
Oh, that's like the best news because in your report, or again, unfortunately, multiple suicide attempts.
Sure.
Maybe I don't, and ODs. So now when we take people to the hospital, that's the end of it, right? For us, we don't follow up. But when we have the new person, part of their responsibility will be to at least let them know that. So for anyone listening who's struggling or knows people that's struggling, the city has a partnership with Summit Counseling for free or reduced counseling for people who live in Dunwoody. And so if you are in need or you know someone, please reach out to that organization or to the Community Service Board of DeKalb. Because there are resources there to help.
Sure. Our clinician will do case management, so they'll follow up on the calls, whether the person goes to the hospital or not. They'll, they'll be followed up on that.
And then one of the things that I think lots of cities are struggling with are these sober living establishments that locate in apartment complexes. Are a fair amount of our overdoses, this may be an unfair question, like tied to those?
I would say some are.
Okay.
I don't know, we've not researched it, but some are definitely happened at those locations where people relapse.
Okay. And the two large drug busts, for lack of, I'm sure there's a better word, were they related to each other or no?
They were, they were separate and one was in an apartment complex and one was in on a residential street.
Wow, okay. And that's interesting. Okay. And also tragic, but okay, thank you. Does anybody else have questions or anything? All right. Thank you, Chief, and everybody else for everything you do. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone have questions of any item? Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, this is more for Carl slash if it goes back to Richard and finance. But the two stormwater funding authorizations, there's amounts in there. I'm looking for the accounting. Oftentimes we show a, you know, what's left in the bucket accounting wise, you know, where are we percentage spend? What's left after this? Are, is this on folk? Was this forecasted just in general? Where does it look like after we send these, submit these to? This is coming from the ARPA funding or is this our stormwater?
Yes, our projects are from the ARPA.
ARPA, right. So we have the ARPA budget numbers. So what does it look like after these two are drawn down?
I don't have an exact number, but we're right at about, we spent about, close to about eight hundred K so far of the three point nine that's been dedicated for infrastructure.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. That's no, no more questions.
Stacy.
Move to approve.
Moved by Tom. Second by Rob. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously.
Mayor, the next item is a second read for SLUP twenty two oh three, an ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning map for zoning conditions of lot parcel number eighteen, three, six, seven, zero, one, zero, four, eight. In consideration of special land use permit case SLUP twenty two dash oh three, eighteen, twenty two, Mount Vernon Road, Dunwoody, Georgia, three, oh, three, three, eight. Madeline Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm just going to give a brief update on this case since there have been changes to the application that the applicant did submit. So just again, a brief overview, they are proposing a seven resident personal care home on eighteen, twenty two, Mount Vernon Road. And again, the purpose of the special land use permit is to approve a specific use only. It doesn't open the avenue for other uses. It's not like a rezoning. So again, the background on the property, it was previously a five thousand square foot split level home that was demolished last year and currently it's it's vacant. The proposal is for a personal care home that would house up to seven senior citizens. It would be operated by the applicants, Anna and Roman Koklin, and it's an approximately sixty eight hundred square foot residential structure with seven bedrooms. So this is the previous proposal. This is the first floor plan that we reviewed last time. Again, it's color coded for clarity. You can see that there's space for seven bedrooms, en suite bathrooms, a living area, a kitchen facility and a laundry room on the first floor. And then this is the current proposal. So for the first floor, they have reduced the area or the footprint of the first floor and reduced the size of some of the bedrooms and living area. And now the laundry room is now on the second floor rather than the first. So that's been removed from the footprint. And then what's also been greatly reduced is the size of the deck to the rear that is now significantly smaller. So for the proposal, the new home would be constructed generally within the same footprint of the previous home. And the driveway configuration has remained the same from the previous proposal, so there's no change there. And again, there will be screening on the side property lines and around the parking area. And the property is still meeting all of the requirements for the setbacks in height. The proposed lot coverage for this proposal is thirty eight point five, which is reduced from the previous proposal of forty three point three percent. And this is just a side by side comparison of the two plans. So you can see that there's been a reduction in the area that's labeled additional footprint. And then there's also been a significant reduction of the deck area. As far as the stormwater mitigation, in addition to these materials that were provided at the last meeting, they've also submitted a hydrology study. Per my discussions with the city engineer, the hydrology study demonstrates compliance with all of the city's requirements for stormwater mitigation. And our recommendation does remain the same. Overall, we do, as staff see that this proposal would be an integration of residential care home for senior citizens into a residential area and that would be a step towards achieving a community where aging in place is possible. And then these are the references to the comprehensive plan. Again, we feel that this plan does meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan and we would ensure all compliance with the zoning ordinance. And then our conditions for approval again also remain the same as previous. If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you all so much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Madeline. And before, just a point of clarification because I think it's important for the audience to know what the attorney said is standard in any rezoning or SLUP, anything to do with zoning, there's always a letter included. It's part of the Georgia process. So though it feels personal and threatening, it is standard operation procedures, procedures for rezonings in Georgia, just so y'all know that. Okay. All right. This is an action item.
I'm going to move to deny the application.
Second. All right. Further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of denying the application, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Sharon, thank you. Jay Benicki.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me set up the presentation first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This discussion tonight is a follow up from an action item at the retreat. I heard a lot of y'all went to a retreat and unfortunately I missed it, went toward a hospital instead, but I'm back now. Anyway, this, let me go through a little bit. It'll be short because it's meant for discussion for a further action item in May. So let's go through the timeline of the past year or so. In March of last year, out of the city council retreat at that time, grew the development of public discussions in town halls on capital needs of the city associated with funding. So this process has been ongoing for over a year, the discussion about it. Looking through April through July, we had over a dozen meetings, town halls, committee meetings, receiving input from citizens, having discussion amongst council members themselves, dialogue between staff and citizens. There was a tremendous amount of input on this. In the end, the city council ended up not doing anything as far as putting anything on the ballot for next year. I'm not sure about your screen, but my screen is going haywire down here.
But can you make it a presentation? Sorry.
Somebody, somebody has taken control of my computer.
Okay.
We will keep on going and pretend it's not happening. In the end, the city council did not vote on doing that and started looking at more of that. Whoever's got the screen, if you could go to the next slide, that would help.
It feels like it's a movie.
Madam Mayor, I'm having the same issues all evening, taking minutes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. We're, we're going to go off of memory for this.
No, we're, give one second. Can Ginger fix it or whoever's back there? Because the home, audience at home needs to be able to see it. Sorry. Just give it one second because it's what, oh, of course, could you just pull up the agenda item differently?
PDF in the.
A PDF and agenda item. Could you just, I'm not trying to make your life complicated.
I have no control over it. Someone, the, the computer's been taken.
Okay. So whoever's listening. Okay. But in the meantime.
I can't.
Can, can we just not? Okay. Share the screen. Okay. There we go. Thank you. All right. Now just almost go full screen presentation. They're working on it. Almost not designed.
Slideshow.
Thank you.
From beginning.
Yes, slideshow. Somebody's doing it. It's kind of creepy because you walked away. See the little thing? Yep. Okay. We can work, we can live with this, this point.
It wasn't you playing with it? Somebody was playing with it.
Okay, just, this is visual enough. We can see it.
Okay. We're going to roll with it as is.
Okay.
Um, okay. In the end, nope, no, nothing was put on the ballot for twenty twenty-two. However, that brings us to the fall of twenty twenty-two, where the city council started to grow through a different type of discussion, and that's have a citizen committee on capital needs. In other words, look at needs, not funding for a discussion. And this is the ultimate input. This is citizens who were here every night, every other night. We, a lot of meetings. And in the end, they did probably the best job one could ask of volunteers to come up with and say, these are things the city needs. They even got to the point of this would be nice, but if there's another alternative, you know, and then there's still some things outstanding with that committee. So now it brings us to the retreat that we just had. And in that part, part of it is we need to look at taking action. Tonight's discussion is the beginning of the action part of that process. We're going to go over four things tonight. Very briefly, the question that would be on the ballot for a call to election, discussion of projects, citizen cost, and next steps. Most of this discussion is with y'all. This is just an update to start the beginning of it. This is what out of the retreat has grown for the question as it stands today. The same as you saw with a few wordsmithing at a fifty-five million dollar part and Councilman Lambert will go into a little bit more of those changes in a second. This is what a fifty-five million dollar bond would cost today on the market. Your.
You gotta move.
I'm having no.
Oh, you gotta be kidding me. Sorry.
Whoever is playing with the PC, stop playing with PC. I'm going to kill it. Okay. I, I just killed it.
Do you think it would be easier for you to go? Oh, okay.
No.
I see if you can.
Whoever's playing, stop touching it. Tell Ginger to stop playing with it.
Okay. See, there you go. Nope. Okay.
No touching the screen anymore, Ginger.
Were you doing that yourself?
Just then I did.
Okay.
I've taken.
Can you get to full screen or is that asking too much?
Maybe or not. I don't know why it was going.
Okay. I think the name, okay.
We're going to go with it as is.
Okay, that's fine. We can see it. Thank you.
If there was a five hundred thousand dollar house that was frozen at four hundred thousand, and we're going to use that as the barometer because that's kind of the mean for Dunwoody, as you say with cars, your mileage may vary. Adding this type of cost for bonds would be additional hundred and fifty-three dollars a year. The current tax bill for that house is about two ninety-six for city proportions alone. If you look at the school taxes and you look at the county taxes, and I also need to add in the county E host because the county structured their E host to forgive county taxes first. So without that, there would be an additional fourteen hundred dollars of county taxes. This would only represent two percent of your total tax bill for a year in that situation. Talking on the projects and, and again, Councilman Lambert will get a little bit more decision. Limit it to Roberts.
Screen's not moving.
We're going to leave it like this.
Got it.
Okay. Roberts, Vermac, softball fields, Waterford and Brook Run. Limit the parks to those five specific areas and also limit trails specifically to Dunwoody Village, Winter's Chapel Road and North Peachtree. So it would limit the park, parts of where these could be done. Like all good things, we're going to put in the bonds disclaimer that these projects will not be done in the priority listed on here. They're not a dollar amount set for it. It makes it so that our pocket, there are projects to be completed on this. Now that's what this fifty-five million part would save. It's slightly different from the fifty-nine. Few things are removed from it. Few things are tweaked. So it would change that part of it, but we want to have a full discussion on this, not just the bond portion, but from the retreat, another deliverable was to discuss the other funding that's out there. To look at that, let's look at what we're going to call the Shalaford funding and a possible use for that. Using at least four point five million dollars for three specific items. Two million dollars for maintenance and repair of existing city facilities. To let you know currently, Brent has about a hundred thousand dollars a year of SPOSS. We have a hundred thousand in facilities that we can use for certain repairs now. That does not necessarily cover it because we're ponying some of it away so that if HVAC blows on this building, we can replace it. We need to have a project that lasts for four or five years where we can do repairs. We can do things like that and maintain the assets we currently have. One point five million will be dedicated towards replacing and improving the Brook Run maintenance facility that we have. And one million would be the Peachtree Middle School turf. We were discussing that would be a different thing to do, not do within a bond issuance, but do for that. So that's a potential use of a portion of the Shalaford sale. Along with this, remember that in November of twenty twenty-three, SPOSS will be up for its first renewal in DeKalb County. It'll be able to have a bigger scope, but it'll be on the ballot at the same time. Currently, we're using it overwhelmingly for transportation with a little bit of public safety, and it's working through that. Most of it goes to road repaving and maintaining road quality we currently have, and mainly with replacements of vehicles with the police department. So that gets us into other potential funding that is out there that the council can take action on, not on the SPOSS, but on the Shalaford funding at the next meeting. Next steps. Here's the way the timeframe would work on this. A call for election in May of twenty twenty-three, tentatively set for May eighth. It can be done later, but there's no obstacle for doing the call earlier. June through October, you would receive various publications and legal organs. We need to do all the, the boxes to check off for, to have this with the election on November seventh of this year. Then in November and December, Bond Council, myself and the finance team would work through the validation process. Maybe work on the details with that, conversations with rating agencies in January, February pricing of the bonds, which means the earliest funds could be available would be in March or April of next year. And with that, those are the next steps. And at this point, I will stop sharing the screen and open the floor up for discussion.
Okay. Um, thank you. You have more? Should we talk about the Shalaford funds first? I think the money on hand and SPOSS, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause so for those of you who don't know, we finally closed on, we owned some property off of North Shalaford Road at Purnishaw, and we sold that to Emory. It was, we owned the building where the Emory Orthopedics was there as well as the, some buildings that had leases expiring behind it. And we sold it all to Emory for them to build more medical facilities. And that closed a few weeks ago, and we have around seven million dollars. Year, when the council decided to list that, which was like in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, we limited, we restricted the funds to capital related projects. While we haven't figured out all seven million at the moment, we are starting with a recommendation of the first four or so million. One is to improve the parks maintenance area at Brook Run Park. We had a fire there, which took out a little bit of space, but fortunately didn't invade the bigger building. But there's a need to enhance our park maintenance space. We would like to open discussions with the school system about potentially turfing or potentially turfing the, we through a land swap a few years ago, we have control after school of a rectangular field on Peachtree Middle School's campus. We would like to turf that, which would give more sports teams the opportunity to have consistent practice space. Because we don't own the land, though we have a long lease on it several decades, and we would negotiate it to be extended. It's not a great use for bond funds because it makes it very complicated because of the ownership structure. And then a two million dollars, which would not be used at once, it would be extended over many years to pay for the maintenance and repair of existing and our growing parks infrastructure. Does that sound correct to people? So with this, at some point, y'all can bring recommendations to us or action items, I guess, particularly on the maintenance facility. Is that correct, Eric? You would bring something for us to spend? And the turf, we can either vote on doing it or we can open a conversation with the school system to have, to begin the conversation. Because we, not only would that normally not be an overnight conversation, there's a shift in leadership happening now, but their COO is new. And so I would begin a dialogue myself with him. And then we could, I'm sure he would have to wait for the new superintendent to take position, but we could at least get it on his radar. And so we can do that. If that's okay with council, just, that's not anything to vote on. Is that, go ahead, John.
Yeah, Lynn, I agree with everything you're saying. I would like to have Brent possibly discuss other opportunities with the school system for other sharing opportunities. It doesn't need just be the Peachtree Middle School field that we had a twenty-year lease agreement on where we are going to fully maintain those fields, which are very hard to maintain because they're being used all the time. But there's opportunities Brent might be able to talk about it or options for other, the high school, the, the use agreements and expand it in some way, shape or form that might be beneficial to both the city and the school system and the children. Again, I don't want to muddy the waters.
Well, but they use our, so we own the baseball fields on their campus because, but it's our land.
Correct.
And they use them during the day. And so it's been beneficial. I know the high school's trickier because of the demand.
Want to muddy the waters.
Right.
Might have some, looks like he's there.
Right. Go ahead.
Sure. So one opportunity that this may present to us is if we're going to open up the IGA that we have with the cap schools at Peachtree Middle, we also may want to have a conversation about Dunwoody Cluster Schools as a whole. There's a lot of open space at elementary schools and at the high school that we may be able to utilize for community programming and create a as usage system like we have at Peachtree Middle at the high school and at some of the elementary schools. So it might be a good opportunity to have a bigger conversation about what that IGA looks like for Dunwoody Cluster Schools and not just Peachtree Middle. And, you know, the high school softball field, if we can enhance it to utilize it for community use and for the school's use also, there's an opportunity there. There's open space in some of the elementary schools that could be transitioned into community space for outside school hour programming. So there's always a need for space in Dunwoody and, you know, the schools control a lot of open green space and a lot of grass. So I, I would, I would venture to say it'd be good to have that conversation and just see where the interest is with DeKalb County Board of Ed. When we.
Sounds like a good plan. So when we open the, when I open the discussion with the COO at this point, I'll bring up the desire and Sandy Springs is a really good model to look at because their parks department's actually programming some of that space. Yeah. Okay. All right. So do, we talked about it, the retreat, the two and a half million, just unallocated for capital. I think we originally had sidewalk, we can talk about that and then come back to like whether we should want to use some of this for sidewalks in light of not being able to include sidewalks in the bond. So, all right. And then SPOSS. We have to wait for the governor to sign it, but I'm certain he'll sign it. And this SPOSS will be different than our first SPOSS because it will allow our SPOSS will look like Fulton Cobb's, Gwinnett's SPOSS. It did not previously, we've only had one SPOSS for those of y'all who don't know. Not, this is not East SPOSS, this is the county SPOSS. And previously, we could only use it for ru- transportation essentially in sidewalks. This will allow us to have some ability to use it for parks if we choose to. One of the big differences for Dunwoody was, is that when Host went away and was replaced by SPOSS, SPOSS, Host was a bigger battle to get the amount, right, Jay? It was, it was a bigger battle to get our fair share from the county, but it had much more flexibility in terms of how we could spend it. SPOSS is pretty straightforward, we hope, with the population. Negotiations with the county is much more straightforward and it doesn't change annually. Once you do it right at the beginning, it's done until the five or six years of the SPOSS. And we will then also be able to use some of that on parks if we choose to, and we will work on that this summer. But, but most of that will continue to go into paving because we still have twenty-four percent of our roads to pave. And so a lot of that will still go into paving. Thank you. All right, Tom. Oh, John, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we talked about the Shalaford funds and we just had a presentation from Stage Door Players. I think we wanted to circle back.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that we circle back into Stage Door Players conversation for possible funding.
Thank you. So potentially, we could use some of this excess money. If you could, if Brent, if Eric, if you could instruct someone to get a sort of elite assessment. One of the things that had been discussed in the past is whether that was Stage Door's permanent home. In other words, was there a potential they were going to move? And I think that's has slowed some city investments as well as just we don't spend that, we haven't invested that much in the last few years. But it is our building and it is our facility, which is the same thing as building, and it's our responsibility to maintain it at a minimum. So if you could circle back with a recommendation on what that looks like, that would be great news. Yes, Joe.
I done, from the North Shalaford.
Right.
Sale at the retreat, we were whiteboarding the facility. They had written down some other, we just put out some other options. So for a future conversation.
Yes. So we're not allocating at all tonight, but we're getting consensus that I'm going to proceed with a conversation with the COO. And go ahead.
If I can go back to the stage door.
Yes.
To help everyone out, that two million that would be spent over years, Brent and I went through some figures earlier today. And in the past year, we have spent about sixty thousand on repairing the stage door side of the building.
Okay.
So it is something where even though it doesn't seem that it, we have a lot, we have a large footprint of old buildings and that two million is probably the most valuable thing to protect the assets that we currently have. I wanted to make sure that everyone knew, it's not like they're just not getting repaired. We have literally sunk about sixty thousand into that building in the past year.
Right. Go ahead, Tom.
So, so the two million, as I. So, so uh, the two million, as I understood it, was to basically help maintain new stuff that would be built should the bond pass. So do we need to look at allocating a bit more from the uh, the pro- the sale of the parcel if we have outstanding repairs that are looming on existing infrastructure?
I see, I see incredible value in that because between Gabe and AJ and myself, we see the repairs at Spruill here and the like. There are a lot of things we already own that we are keeping together, but we really need to upgrade in some places. I'll give good examples of some are easy ones. The roof at the annex is something we're perpetually looking in that glass brick. That's probably going to be a huge repair at some point, and we need to start looking at funding for repairing things like that nature.
Didn't we discover that that couldn't really be repaired or something, that glass brick? I think we have to look at redesigning potentially.
There, there is, no matter what, it's going to be a high.
Yes, okay, that's fine, right. Or just replace it. But anyway, okay. All right. So you'll bring us some suggestions and we can go above the two million because we have money left above and beyond that. So. All right. And then I think that explains SLOSP pretty well. Okay, so Tom, did you wanna take over on the project stuff?
Um, yes, I can. Yeah. So I would, I would just like to uh, point out um, the Citizens Advisory Committee, as Jay's pointed out, um, I just wanna emphasize there was nothing rushed or hasty about that process. It was, we met for over three and a half months. I believe there's a minimum of five meetings if, if my memory serves me correct. Um, and I would also like to give high praise to the, the citizens that served on that committee. Everybody took the job very seriously. Um, they were assigned homework at every meeting, a, quite a bit of homework. And, and, and they did it and they, and they, they took it, they took their role seriously. Um, they, they visited sites, they spoke with neighbors and other residents uh, to get a well-rounded opinion of what was important, not only to themselves, but to others in the community. And I believe uh, they did an excellent job with a very large task that was assigned to them. And I, and then in the end, I believe they came up with a list that very accurately reflects what our community is asking for and, and identified as priorities for us as far as capital investment within the community and throughout the city. Um, and it is the list that the committee uh, provided to us, which was used to um, create the list of projects that we're looking at doing over, over the next few years through both a bond and also two of the projects that were, that were highly rated on that were the two that we've already discussed that we would, we can handle with uh, felt most appropriate to use the proceeds from the Schallerford Sale rather than uh, funding those through a bond.
And, and those were the field at Peachtree and the maintenance.
Maintenance facility, yes. And, and I'll say this, that even prior to the hire at the maintenance facility, that, that was a, a rough uh, rough operation. We actually toured that um, myself and several of the members of the committee along with uh, Parks Department and uh, yeah, once, once we got around there and saw, we realized that that is a priority and, and that's also uh, gonna be a maintenance facility for Public Works as well. And um, uh, potentially office space uh, for the parks, field office space for the Parks Department, uh, which would provide additional space potentially at um, the Vermac Park. So uh, the list that, that's, that's before everybody was essentially the list that, that the commi- uh, the Citizens Committee provided for us.
Uh, just to interrupt, Jay, could you bring that up, the projects list?
Like the, the one from the Citizen Committee?
No, the one that's in your presentation.
Yes. Maybe, I'm not sure now.
And I, and I'll just run it down real quick while he's finding for it. Uh, that was the, the Roberts Drive Park, uh, the Vermac Drive Park, uh, softball fields, uh, Waterford Park and Brook Run Park and, and the when Brook Run Park on there, just to emphasize, this is not a major uh, project like the last time. This is to uh, add bathrooms that would serve uh, the users of both the dog park and the community garden. And to add an additional picnic pavilion um, down near in the Treetop Quest area, just another area for families or people in the park to, to gather and have a lunch or, or an event or something like that. So there's nothing major um, in Brook Run plans.
And Waterford Park is.
Waterford Park would be uh, the trails through the neighborhood. Uh, I'm sorry, the, the trails in the park, which are soft surface trails uh, and connecting to some of the neighborhoods nearby, um, as well as a, a playground.
Right.
Which were both uh, items that we kind of contractually obligated ourselves to with, with the sale to complete. So those, having the opportunity to get those done through uh, a potential bond initiative would be beneficial for us. Um, and uh, so I, the, the trail projects, I I will make a, a comment here that we engaged the PATH Foundation at the same time that the committee was meeting and uh, when, when we've met to discuss trails, the, the Citizens Committee felt it was best to hold off on a, a full evaluation of, of trail projects until after the PATH recommendation gave us their, their plan. I've, I've already reached out uh, to the entire committee uh, following the retreat to update them on where we stand. Um, as far as the projects that we're discussing um, moving forward with as well as plans for meeting to discuss uh, the trail segments um, on- once, once PATH has given us their recommendation and we're working on uh, setting those dates. And once those are set, that those will obviously be public meetings, just like all of the other ones were. Um, but, but one, one of the things that when we did, when we did meet, that was discussed as priorities. Uh, two of the trails, uh, the Dunwoody Village and, and Winter's Chapel. Um, the, the North Peachtree one is a, what I said at the retreat is a wild card because this was not one that had been discussed yet. Um, and just to clarify what North Peachtree means, that would be essentially from I two eighty-five of the Dunwoody Village Apartments uh, to Brook Run Park. And, and the major reason that was added is uh, we've been getting a lot of requests uh, for residents or a lot of students that walk to Chestnut in particular. Um, and are concerned about the safety of those students walking to school. It's very narrow sidewalk on a very busy road. And so um, having um, a more substantial sidewalk and other pedestrian improvements uh, to make it safer. Um, combined with the fact that it would serve two schools, both Chestnut and uh, Peachtree Middle School as well as connect to our flagship park and also is a gateway into the city. Um, I'll be honest with you. I just kinda took the initiative based on local feedback I was getting from uh, some of the people in my district uh, to, to suggest this as a potential trail. I did speak with uh, Michael Smith and Public Works to ensure that this was something that was feasible within the time. We'd have to operate and he seemed to believe that it was. Um, we have not, we do not have a a, a plan in place for this, just to make crystal clear. Um, but uh, that's, that was added for consideration based on the factors I just named. So um, so this is where we are. If there's any questions, um, I, I'd be happy to answer them, you know, related to the projects or, or the committee or anything like that.
Okay. So I just wanna talk broadly about bonds, just broadly about bonds. So bonds, correct me if I'm wrong. So there are two ways to pay for capital, pri- primary ways to pay for capital projects if you're in municipal government. One is that you save. The more expensive the project, the longer it takes to save the funds. The second way is to do a bond, ask the residents to improve it, approve it, which means that the projects get completed much sooner. Um, and more projects get completed in a relatively short time. Um, and so then the people who are, so if you save, correct me if I'm wrong, the people that are paying um, taxes for the next fifteen years or ten years till you get the project may or may not benefit from it, correct?
Correct.
With a bond, you're able to borrow the money, get started. So the people that are contributing to it um, get to then use the projects. It's a matter of personal philosophy of which you, method you prefer, correct? I mean, it's just two different ways of paying for projects. When we became a city, not only did we really not, we had a very small park at Winwood Hollow that had been there forever. I think Brook Run's Playground had been built. But um, we were a city of that time of probably forty-two thousand people with two and a half public parks potentially. Um, we've grown that exponentially. I would, I think that people with young families and people my stage of empty nesters and older people like to have outdoor space. Um, but we didn't start with very much. Not only that, there wasn't, there was probably not a single road in Dunwoody that had ever been paved after it was installed or converted from dirt. And so we've had a lot of work to do on that. And pri- our primary capital investments have been in paving. We spent, there are some years we spend more paving than Sandy Springs that is double our size. Um, and so, but as we look towards the future, these kinds of questions about how to finance things um, are important questions and there's some value in taking it to the voters and letting the voters decide, I think. Potentially, so um, but I just thought I'd share that is my perspective on what a bond is versus what a bond isn't. If I have questions, Tom.
Yeah, everything you said right there is spot on. I've, over the past few years, I've taken advantage of every opportunity I've had to, to learn as much about this as possible, municipal finance and ways of financing capital projects for cities. I've taken uh, courses on my own up at the Carl Vinson Institute at the University of Georgia, as well as courses offered by the Georgia Municipal Association. Spoken to a lot of experts on this and everything you said is correct as far as bonds being an appropriate way uh, of doing the public good, providing services uh, or amenities for the residents. Uh, and the ones that are contributing to the payment of those are the ones that are getting to enjoy that. So uh, the, the opposite, I, the other way of doing it, as you mentioned, would be to save money. Put aside money until you have enough to build a project and then build it. That doesn't really work for a number of reasons. Uh, first of all, uh, as you said, it might take ten to fifteen years to save up that money and uh, the people that have been contributing over those ten to fifteen years to sock that money away may no longer live here by the time you get to build that. So they've been contributing something that they're, they're not gonna see the benefit of. Uh, another really important factor to think of is uh, building cost inflation. And um, prior to the, prior to the pandemic, Atlanta was second only to Austin, Texas as far as the rate of building and cost inflation roughly around thirteen percent per year. Uh, so if you tack on, so what might be a an eight million dollar project, by the time you save up the money to build that eight million dollar project, the cost is probably doubled. And, and now you, you get, you'll never, you'll never be able to cut, uh, keep up with building cost inflation. And as we know, currently, the market inflation is, is even further out of control. So, so to suggest that you can uh, effectively save money aside from the people that are contributing, not being the beneficiary, beneficiaries of that. You're actually gonna spend a lot more money in the long term uh, through that method and may never be able to catch up. So it's just something to keep in mind. Um, and uh, that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Questions, comments, anybody? Nope. Joe, go ahead. It's fine. It's all good. All right. Well, we will see this again, correct? Did I miss anybody? Because I can't turn my head both ways at the same time. Did I miss anybody? Okay, thank you.
Correct, thank you.
Public comments? If there's any cards, okay. Have you felt, you just can fill out a card after Mr. Hickey. We know your name. Just promise me you'll fill it out. Okay. You get three minutes.
Uh, my name is Bob Hickey. I'm a Dunwoody resident since, like, not, not Dunwoody. I've been in Dunwoody since nineteen seventy-five and I've been in the Cav County uh, ten more years plus that. And I quite frankly, don't need an education on bonds. Okay, I've I've had mortgages and all that. And the fact of the matter is, you're talking about you uh, how expensive it might be because of inflation. I did a calculation based upon the, the numbers that uh, Benicki set out on what the millage rate would be uh, to finance the, I don't know whether it's fifty-five million or fifty-nine million, but anyway, the millage rate goes up from three point whatever it is, oh, three. For the bonds, it's another one. That's a thirty-three percent increase in my property tax bills. Okay, thirty-three percent. Also, the cost of the bonds, when you pay them back over twenty years, makes the cost of the projects now come out to be a hundred plus million dollars. Okay, a hundred plus million dollars. Okay, that's a lot of money for a little bitty city like Dunwoody. Uh, the, the information you got, I talked to earlier about walk, walk, talk, the talk. Now you're, the talk is, is wavering. We had the Citizens Advisory Committee, which I was at the last meeting and they agreed not to make any recommendations until after the PATH Committee, yet you guys are already coming up with your trail budget, okay? How in the hell can you come up with a trail budget until you listen to what that last committee had to say? And you never put out a report on what the projects were the last committee, not to the public. Okay, Jay took it and had it on a chalkboard and ran with it. Nobody ever got to see it. You never put out a report on it. The parks, well, the fifty-nine million was the most recent bond issue detail that I saw. Now it's fifty-five million. Can you please publish the list with the money on it and get consistent where the citizens have a chance to look at it and give some input? Because the input softball, twelve million dollars. There ain't no parks in, there no place in Dunwoody to get a softball field and spend the, the, the two parks for the seniors cost seven million. So you go buy something and Dunwoody for five million, it's, oh, terrible. Dunwoody Village Streetscape, fifteen million as a trail. They ain't a single trail in that plan. It's revising the parking lots and probably paving the private parking lot, I think. I don't know. Okay, anyway. The talk, okay, and the walk is pretty wide and flexible. Just walk the walk and talk the talk and publish the stuff and get consistent and let the committees, okay? Uh, the PATH Committee hadn't even been here yet. You said we weren't gonna do anything till the PATH Committee, yet you have twenty-one million dollars you're gonna spend on bonds and the PATH Committee and the Capital Allocation Committee hasn't even had their final meetings. Terrible.
Thank you. Um, gee, come on up. Did you fill out a card?
I didn't.
Okay. Oh, she brought it over me. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Uh, Gina Parity, fifteen sixty-three Vernon Way Court. Just wanted to quickly thank you all. I know you couldn't comment for months. We've been emailing you um, on behalf of the few that are still here and those that couldn't attend tonight. Thank you for listening. We will remember it for a long time and hopefully this will be the first of many times you see me. I might start getting involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I believe that concludes public comment. I don't have any additional cards. Um, city manager comments?
Uh, no additional comments.
What about executive session?
No executive session.
For who? Nice. Um, council comments? Start, anybody? Um, you have something? No, okay, that's fine. Um, so this week, I think yesterday, today was the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Dunwoody tornado. Um, Mr. Hickey was here, I presume, unless he was out of town. Um, a lot of us were here. I was here um, in my basement with my trembling five-year-old and a new baby. And um, it was um, quite a night and there was loss of life and there was tremendous loss of property. But what came out of that was a community that um, knew how, began to work together and heal together. And eventually it led to Lemonade Days to raise money to replace the trees. Um, it was used to be people bringing toys from their backyards. It was at Brook Run Park as a fundraiser. It's grown into the Lemonade Today's, which is in about two weeks, which is a city festival favorite. Um, but we are a community that rallies around each other in times of needs and in good times. And so it's just worth remembering that that's what happened twenty-five years ago. It was quite a night. And the next day, and the AJC is running a series of articles or they shared a series of articles over the weekend um, reflecting back. This was really sort of pre-internet. And, you know, we didn't have phone, we didn't have computers in our hands. Um, we relied on Dunwoody Crier. They got a big award. He was out with his reporters doing lots of reporting. So we could know, cuz if you couldn't get out of your neighborhoods, which many of us could not, it was only weeks later that we understood like what happened to other places. So anyway, with that, I think I'll take a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn. Move by Stacy. Second by Rob. Any discussion? Hearing none. I call the question. All in favor, say aye. No executive session.